Okay, we live?
We are live. Attendees are starting to join.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the October 13th, 2021, meeting of the Village of Ameranic Planning Board. We have a couple of items on our agenda tonight. We have some minutes. We have recertification of the cell tower permit and we have some site plan review applications. So first, we have minutes of our last meeting, which was September 22nd, 2021. I hope every member of the board had an opportunity to review them. And does anyone have any comments or corrections, changes? I see head shaking. No, no one's speaking up. I don't have anything either. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as drafted? Thank you. A second? Okay, Cindy? You're muted.
He's muted.
Sorry, yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I'll take care of the minutes. Okay, next up on the agenda is a certification for the cellphone tower at 1600 Harrison Avenue on the roof of the building. This is something, the permit for this comes up every five or seven years, I think, five years?
Five years.
A resolution has been submitted to us and I hope members of the board saw the revised resolution, which came this afternoon. Some minor cleanup on it. I don't think we have the applicant's attorney with us, but I don't know. Does anybody have any questions at this point in time?
Um, good evening, Chairwoman. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good to see you, Planning Board members. Kristen Motel, on behalf of the applicant AT&amp;T. I think you did a great job summing it up. Madam Chair, we don't have anything additional at this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions since you've had a few weeks to take a look at the materials we provided.
Anybody have any question, anything? This is pretty straightforward. The resolution was pretty much how it looked the last time this was done, except for a few minor edits. Some minor changes that have been made to the existing. No, I think we're good there. All right, do I have a motion then to approve the resolution, the revision that was sent to us this afternoon?
So moved.
Okay, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We'll see you again in another five years or so.
I think you'll see me sooner than that, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to the site plan review section of our agenda. And the first application that's before us this evening is 1205 West Boston Post Road. This is a new application for us. And this is better known as McDonald's, which the Village of Ameranic knows where this is and is familiar with the way it looks and whatnot. Now, since this is a first first time this application has come to us. This is the beginning of the process. Tonight, our goal is to type it for secret purposes and set a public hearing. But why we have a representative here from the applicant, why don't we start with the presentation of the project to the board and the members of the public?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Darius Chefazada. I'm an attorney at the law firm Harris Beach in White Plains. We're representing McDonald's on this application. With me is Alex Lemay from Bowler Engineering, the engineer of record. I don't see him on the screen, but if he is on another screen.
I just promoted him. He'll pop up in a second.
Oh, great, Ashley. Thank you. As you're aware, there he is. As you're aware from our application, we are renovating the existing McDonald's. We're going to keep the McDonald's on the same footprint. We're not changing anything, just a rehab and renovation of the existing facility. I'm going to have Alex, if he can walk you through the plan. If you can give him authority to share his screen, that would be fantastic. He can then walk you through the plan and we can answer any questions today you may have.
You should be able to share.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Lemay with Bowler Engineering. We're the civil engineers for the project. What you see on the screen is just a colorized version of our site plan sheet that was submitted within the plan set. And I'll just zoom in so that you guys can see a little bit clearer the actual, the building and the site itself. I think as the board is pretty aware, it's an existing McDonald's on West Boston Post Road there. It's situated in the general commercial C1 zone. The building, as Mr. Chefazada had alluded to, is going to be staying on the existing footprint. It's a 4,631 square foot building, which we're proposing interior and exterior renovations for. The number of seats inside the building is 91 and that will remain unchanged. Some small site improvements that go along with the renovations for the building include the ADA parking on the west side of the building. And that'll be done in concrete with concrete sidewalk for access to the building, as well as a little bit of full depth pavement repair near the parking spaces. Relative, just quickly on the parking, we are losing one parking space just due to the restriping for the ADA accessible spaces on the west side of the building there. There's currently 57 spaces on site and we'll be reducing it down to 56. However, that does comply with the villagers' requirements for restaurant use. The drive-through exists currently for the building today. It's a single order point drive-through and that will remain. We will be replacing the drive-through equipment, which includes the, the menu board, the pre-browed menu board and a gateway clearance bar. They will be in the same locations. The designs themselves, the menu board and the pre-browed menu board, they're sort of like big TV screens, if I can say it that way. And they have, the equipment has the capability to change the brightness based on ambient lighting. So if it's a little darker outside, the brightness will dim, so it's not as aggressively lighting the area. And similarly with the speaker volume. If the ambient noise is lower, the speaker volume automatically lowers so that the decibel level is not, you know, aggressively loud when there's not a lot of ambient noise. Regarding the, the, the building itself and the wall signage, there is a McDonald's word sign on the front of the building facing West Boston Post Road. That existing sign is about 65 square feet. In the proposed condition, we will replace that sign with a more contemporary McDonald's word sign and that, that'll be about 32.83 square feet. So it's roughly half the size from a signage perspective. For the drive-through signs themselves, I mean, in total, the existing drive-through, the menu board, the pre-browed board and the, the clearance bar are about 57 square feet. And the proposed signage, they'll be down to 39.52 square feet. So it's a reduction of a little more than 17 square feet for the drive-through signs themselves. That's the, the gist. That's the general kind of information for what we're proposing with the application. So with that, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them.
So the changes to the exterior of the building are basically signage?
Yeah, they'll be reskinning the exterior of the building. So it'll, it'll look a little more contemporary. But I'll say there's, they've been doing them all over the country. There's, there's one in New Rochelle on North Avenue that was recently done. That is a good, probably comparison of what this building will look like.
The one over by the college?
It's, I think it's by, it's on North. I actually have it up. I could share that. So I was just looking at it. Let's see here. This is on North Avenue in New Rochelle. So this is generally what the store will look like. For, for this site, there's a little more glazing, a little more windows on the, that front on Boston Post Road there. So a little bit different, but from materials and an aesthetics perspective, this is generally what it would look like. And the McDonald's sign, you could see right here, that's the, the more current contemporary standard for McDonald's from a signage perspective.
Thank you. Any other member of the, of the board have any questions at this point in time? No. Okay. We got a little jump on things. Are the planning board's consultants reviewed the application before tonight's meeting? So you have some comments from our engineer and from our landscape architect who I don't see here tonight. I don't know if she's in the participant, any other, other?
No.
Okay.
We received both of those.
Yes, you've received them both. Okay. So as, as we said earlier, we can type this for secret and set a date then for you to come back and if you feel you have, you would have answers to those questions, how much time you would need for that, that would be a good time for us to set the date and and then we can make sure the planning board receives your materials beforehand and do a review of the site plan.
We'll be ready for the next meeting for sure.
For the next meeting?
In the, in the engineering letter, I don't think there were any material comments that would, you know, promote any sort of plan changes. In the landscape architect's letter, however, I think their one recommendation was for additional, uh, street trees along the frontage, which I think we do have some room to add a few. And I would keep it probably towards the west side of the frontage. As you get towards the east, there's utility poles and overhead wires and things like that. But adding a few street trees along the frontage, there is certainly something we would agree to comply with in any sort of a condition.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like there's anything controversial here. Okay, Ashley, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not sure we have enough time to get the notices out to be on for a public hearing for the 27th. But we definitely would have enough time to get the notices out in the newspaper for the first meeting in November.
November? Is that okay with you? We, we have a long lead time with the newspapers to get the, to get the notices published for a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, November is fine. What's that date, Ashley?
The second Wednesday?
Yeah, November 10th.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that works.
Okay, so we need, now, Ashley, this is a type two action for secret?
Yes.
All right, can we do this in one motion? Type it and set the public hearing date for the 10th of November? Where's, where's Teresa? Teresa?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, you can do that. Please just say the time, date and location of the, of the public hearing, because I'm sure it'll be Zoom.
The location is wherever we all are. Okay, all right. So then we need a motion to type this application as a type two action under secret, and that's because it meets the definition of a type two action. Is that correct, Ashley?
That is correct. It meets the definition of 617.5C2 and 9.
Okay. And to schedule a public hearing on the site plan for this application for November 10th. Do I have to, can I say seven o'clock even though this may not be the first item on the agenda?
Yes, yes, you can.
And the meeting will be held via Zoom. So people can log in from wherever they are. Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great. We should be able to move this pretty far the next time you come back to us, when you come back in November.
Thank you. We'll see you then. Appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, have any, any questions or anything? In the meantime, you know, especially of the engineer, please get in touch with John. Okay, great.
Can I just say, for the members of the public who are on right now, you are welcome to email any comments that you have in advance of the public hearing to the planning board office. And then you're also welcome to attend the public hearing on November 10th.
Great. Thank you. Okay, thanks very much. Okay, this brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a site plan application for 1043 West Boston Post Road. This is our, this is Food Night. It's a former bank building. Actually, it was my bank a long time ago. It was on Richville Road. But now it wants to be a chopped food establishment, which
But Chair, we're keeping with the theme of green. Before it was money, now it's salad. So we're sticking with the theme. I don't know if we get enough credit for that, Chair, but hey, we try.
Before you begin, Mr. Spass, still had the chair, still had the floor. You interrupted me. Okay, this application was before us, yes, in June. It came to us in June. We typed it and off you went to the zoning board where you've been for a while. And I understand you're still at the zoning board. You're not quite done yet. Is that correct?
Chair, we are almost through, but if I could, can we just promote, we do have part of the CHOP team. So while they're doing that, I'll just give a brief two-second analysis outline. Yes, Chair, we appear Thursday.
So tonight, we're just going to sort of refresh our memories of what the, what the project is. If there's been any changes since we saw you last in June, but you know, I'm sure you understand that when an application comes to us and then it has to go to another land use board, the planning board doesn't really do a deep dive into the analysis of the application until it comes back because things change while you're away.
Right, Chair. I just want to make sure.
Our site plan review. Who else are you looking for?
I see Brian is on. If we could elevate or promote Dennis or Justin, Ralph, there's three other individuals that should be.
There's a David and an AE. Either one of those are on your team?
There you go. There's Ralph. And then Dennis, I, if you want to promote that other email, that would be great. Let me see if I'm getting a text. No, I'm not getting a text. Dennis or Justin, are you on?
Justin is on, I see.
Justin's on, I promoted.
Okay, great. We're good to go. We're ready to roll. Yes, Chair, so we last appeared Thursday, this past Thursday, at which point the, the public component of ZBA was closed. And a straw pole was held reflecting the fact that CHOP, the, the permit for restaurant carryout in all likelihood would be granted at the next ZBA meeting, which we, November 4th. Resolution was asked to be prepared for that evening. On, but I think that because this matter has been pending since December 2020, the ZBA, in their good discretion, said, hey, we're going to do a straw poll. We're not going to vote on the resolution tonight. But we are going to, you know, the resolution will look like a restaurant carryout. My clients plan on going forward with that use that is acceptable to us with the caveat that the zoning board didn't say, listen, in the future, if you feel that you do satisfy the pure definition of restaurant as defined in the code, you could come back, establish the basis for that and seek a car service. So as of tonight and as of when we go back to ZBA on the 4th, where they vote, and hopefully back here before the planning board on November 10th, a resolution will have been signed, circulated and signed, and we will be, as they define, a restaurant carryout. On, so I would plead with the Chair and members of the planning board, any input that you could offer from the various memos that we receive from Keller Sessions, Sessions dated July 9th, AKRF from July 7th, and Terabell Land Design July 9th. We really would love to get as much feedback as possible. So come on November 10th, Chair and members of planning board. We really can go forward with the process, with the, with the operation of, of CHOP. Again, it's, it's been a very prolonged process. No fault of anybody in particular. It was an interesting experience, but we love to see CHOP up and running as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as you just noted, you've had comments from the planning board, the preliminary comments from the planning board's consultants since early July. And so those comments stand as having to be addressed. I think that also the planning board members now have had an opportunity also to, to review the plans, the way they stand right now. And I, I, before I go forward, also there was some discussion about traffic the last time you were here, which was actually July 28th. I missed that meeting. I believe my understanding is that the traffic issues have been put to rest and there's no outstanding traffic issues. Does everyone agree with that statement?
I'm, the traffic and pedestrian safety is probably my number one issue here. So I, I know we discussed some things. I know DOT has to get involved here. So maybe Mr. Spass can update us where, where you are dealing with the DOT issues.
I think Brian Dempsey, their engineer is on the phone.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Brian is here and I'm going to pass the virtual mic over to Brian. Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, Ms. Goldstein. I'm used to you back when you were back at HZMI.
In terms of DOT, we've had discussions with DOT, got through the plan with them. We, um, but now with the latest from zoning, we have to do some tweaking on the plan. So we have to re, will we submit that to DOT? So we're in the process, the permit process with them right now.
And are they requiring at this point, anything special? Are they prohibiting left-hand turns? Are they, what's their feeling?
They haven't officially committed to anything, but as of now, they're not committing, not requiring any restrictions on left turns.
Wow. Um, I, I don't know what's in our authority, but I do drive past, I drive down the Boston Post Road. Sometimes I have the misfortune of being there when the kids are getting out for lunch at 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock when they're trying to run back to class. And they're literally running across the street. Now, they weren't running across back and forth to the bank, but I suspect they will be running back and forth to CHOP. And I'm sure CHOP wants that too. They want the customers, but I, with so much traffic at that area between the health club and the pizza place and McDonald's and all of the opportunities for kids to eat and get off campus. I, I don't know what can be done about it, but I would hope that DOT would, would share the village's concerns, that this is, I mean, it's like Walters. It's, it's just massive numbers of kids back and forth across the street and not a single one, unless they're going to the pizza place, crosses at the crosswalk.
It's Goldstein. I just, Brian, if I can, just for a second, I, I, my kids obviously go to school and they're frequent that area. And I know Abigail, who was a former member of ZBA, pointed that out. And I know Mr. Dempsey and the CHOP team were very, very, very concerned about that sin, Ms. Goldstein. They shared that concern. I work out at Equinox. I know at this point you still can make a left turn out of Equinox and also out of the pizza. And, and I'm sure that Mr. Dempsey could arrive at, for example, the peak hours, when you're talking about school between certain hours, maybe if, if the DOT doesn't obviously impose any restrictions. And if the village has limitations, I'm sure that Brian and the CHOP team can arrive at something, especially in those particular hours, that can assist those concerns. But Brian, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interject.
All right, it's something we'll talk to DOT about further. We have talked to them. We have looked at it. We have reviewed the pedestrian situation with AKRF. We are close enough to the crosswalk where the students would likely use the crosswalk and there is a sidewalk between there. It's not like they're, because we are right, you say they do use it to get to the pizza place. We're right next door to the pizza place. We're the next property over. There is a 20 mile per hour school speed limit zone in front of our site.
Now, she starts 250 feet to the south, Brian. Exactly. Because I get a lot of clients on the BTL calendar for that.
And one thing, if you do restrict lefts, what most likely will happen, and if you see it at Trader Joe's where the lefts are restricted, people will pull out and you turn into the bank and you make your, you turn it inside the bank and pull here. So in this case, you'd have people either pulling out, turning into the pizza place and turning out, left out of the pizza place. Or turning left into the school and turning around in the school and going.
Or Starbucks, yep.
Do you have any calls scheduled with DOT in the near future that the village could join? A representative from the village could join in on that call?
We, we can have, we can do. We don't have one scheduled yet because we have to, because of the zoning comments, we had to do some revisions to the plan. So we'll submit that in. And then, then we'd have, it's better then to have the call at that point.
Okay, I think the village would like a representative on that call from the planning board.
Okay.
And when you revise plans with the zoning board, also send the revisions to the planning board. You've had two revisions since June and they both just went to the zoning board. So you've got to send them into everybody so we all get them.
Ashley, can we just take one quick step back? I just want to confirm, when we refer to representative, Ashley, someone from the planning board or from your office or just so we?
It would probably be someone from my office, a traffic engineer, and then it would be open to any planning board members that were short of a forum. So.
So we will, we will, so when Brian sets up that call, I will notify Ash, advise you so it can be circulated for any members that want to, but obviously not creating a forum. I got it, got it.
Have to be less than four.
Okay, okay, okay. So that's traffic. Okay, so we still have some issues there. Okay, engineer, the engineering, there was a memo that you received back in, as Andrew mentioned, back in early July. I don't know if you have any questions of Mr. Keller, who's here?
Ralph Paragene, Providence Design Engineering. I'm the civil engineer. We're trying to, I mean, one of the comments was to verify the capacity of the existing underground dry wells, but short of digging them up and excavating the entire, you know, front of the property, there's really no way to do that. I'm not sure how we can satisfy that comment in particular. I can talk with Mr. Keller on a separate basis if you'd like, just to see if we can work something out there, John.
Absolutely, Ralph.
I mean, it's
discuss it. I, I, I didn't perform the original review as the bond did, and I was reviewing his memo tonight before the meeting.
I do have a record drawing showing the three, that was the permit, the original permit drawing that was submitted to the village. I have a copy of that. I can provide you with, so.
Well, that'll be helpful.
Yeah. Also, so as far as the, I mean, there was some other comments that, you know, as far as the calculations and all, which we're going to be dealing with. The other thing that I know at the last planning board meeting, board members requested that we look at the sidewalk in the front as well as the retaining wall. If I can share my screen, I can go over what the original looks like and what we're thinking on the revisions to it to see if this revision will satisfy the board.
Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. So this was the original submission in which we had a sidewalk along the front of the retaining wall parallel, but that is, that is not really needed. What we're going to do is just take that out and continue to sidewalk along the driveway to meet these sidewalk on Boston Post Road. So the comment, I believe, was that some concern was about how close this retaining wall was to the right of way. And what we're proposing on our current, the concept, we have not submitted yet, but we're just proposing, showing you this to get your feedback. We took the sidewalk straight out, parallel to the entrance drive. We took out that secondary sidewalk and we moved the retaining wall three feet further back. So that retaining wall now is only about two feet tall on the page down here. I apologize, it's like, I'm still haven't gotten used to working on the remotely. So by doing that, we've shifted the retaining wall back. The wall height now at this corner is little over a foot, and at this corner, it's about just under two feet. So we've significantly reduced the impact of that wall and its appearance from, uh, both from.
Is that ready to be sent to, uh, planning and can we, could that be circulated, uh, this week?
I, I'm, I have to, uh, I have not revised the entire set yet. And Andrew, I have only these couple of pages. And I haven't incorporated any of the comments from the engineer or anybody else at the moment, so.
Okay, um, between the right of way and the, and the patio, the retaining wall, uh, what material is going there?
This will all be, this will all be a, uh, planted area. We're gonna, it's all gonna be landscaped in there.
Good.
Um, we basically, right now, since we're not the landscape architect, all we're doing is showing it as a, uh, symbol for vegetation in these areas. So we're showing this as a vegetated area and here is vegetated. And whatever other, uh, whatever, whatever else the landscape architect comes up with in that front inch, so.
When you say vegetated, at this point, you're basically just showing grass and then.
Well, we're just showing it a symbol for landscaping, basically. That's it. So we're just.
There'll be another plan that shows what's.
There will be a landscape architect, uh, engaged to do a formal landscape plan in that area.
Okay. That's a good.
I mean, we have some other thoughts that I have to run by my client on the patio and it's, and maybe reducing the wall and all of that. But I don't want to do that in front of the board, obviously, but something we can, uh, discuss later. And maybe we can, maybe it is an opportunity. I'm not promising anything, but right now, this is the concept.
Well, I, I think that, uh, one of the first, uh, reactions to the, um, renderings that were shown to us back in June was right now, the, the bank, which is set back from the street, is the front is all lawn and plantings and green and having a patio, more concrete patio put in front of the building. We wanted something, uh, soft to soften it up. So I see you moving in the right direction. Um, and, um, it'll be interesting for us, uh, to see. You know, I'm certainly interested in seeing what, what you come up with when you submit the next set of plans, um, especially the landscape plan. And I think that's a good segue then, you know, our landscape architects' comments to you are also, uh, basically similar. And similar to what we just heard from McDonald's is, you know, uh, possibly putting in some big trees if possible, um, along the front. And you are removing some trees as well from the site. Be clearly identified and noted and what trees are remaining. You know, we need a existing conditions drawing, which I think you have in your system, because I see it grayed out on other drawings. But just to, you know, what's on the site now and then how it's going to change, what trees are coming down, what trees are going to replace them, things like that.
Right, and we had, we had submitted a demolition or removals plan for the site, which showed the tree removals. Um, but again, that's got to be coordinated with the landscape architect, so. We have no problem doing that. It's just, it's just, uh, setting a time and getting them to, excuse me, getting their input.
And I don't recall, since this has been a few meetings ago, what can somebody just explain the lighting quickly?
Um, I'd have to defer to one of the CHOP team members, uh, we, lighting design, I believe.
We're talking about the parking area lighting?
A- any lighting on the site, but we can, I mean, that's something I'd like to ask about, so it can be, it can wait till the next meeting. I'm sure you've addressed it, so.
Yes, we, we will have to submit a sliding, a lighting plan along with the, we will be submitting lighting plan in the next package.
I think what we're trying to do tonight is sort of give you a sense of what all our questions are, or as many as we have tonight.
Yes.
When you come back to us, you'll be more prepared, um, to answer the questions and to move the application forward.
And again, uh, Chair, in all fairness to the team, um, I, I, I hope it doesn't appear that it's not the lack of being prepared or dialogue. Literally, it wasn't a week ago, Thursday, that we, we really didn't know what direction we were going. What we were going to be defined as, what would the setup was going to be. So, you know, I, I certainly, and I, we appreciate the time you're sharing with us tonight. But the CHOP team, uh, since, uh, you know, fall of twenty twenty has worked really diligently to arrive at a great plan. So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, by virtue of that, we're not aware, you know, surely, sir, how we want to approach the lighting. It'll be forthcoming, isn't from not thinking about it, but we just, until last week, weren't sure really what it was going to be, so.
No, I didn't mean to imply.
No, I understand.
All I'm trying to do is, is get everything out on the table, so the next time you come, we can move things along more efficiently.
And we appreciate that. Thank you. We really do.
You know me, I hate to.
I know you do.
But we can get all the issues out on the table this time, and then you all can work on it, you know, come back to us with what you feel are, you know, final plans or as close to final as possible. We can move this along as, as, you know, as quickly as possible as soon as you get the ZBA resolution.
Well, and, and certainly, and I'm sure the consultants will work on this, but it, somebody, you know, it may be, um, expeditious to have somebody does just look at the code, section three forty-two dash seventy-six, go down the list. There's a whole bunch of things that, um, you know, are enumerated there, that if you have those, it really does streamline the process.
Right. And not everything applies, but if it applies, it should be submitted to us so that we can see it and ask questions and things like that. Okay?
We'll be sure we get the, the material to you. I, I mean, we're, we're scheduled to go back, November fourth is EBA, but we don't obviously want to give this to you the morning of. We want to make sure our documents and plans are.
You're going to need to follow the, the submission schedule that's posted on the village's website. And, and you were being placed on the next agenda will be based on you hitting that submission schedule.
I see, I have to read more? What? I'm just kidding. Fine, absolutely. We'll be happy to do that.
Okay, all right. No, it sounds like, it sounds like some exciting thing is coming to us. It sounds like you, you know, we're, we're moving in the same direction. Let's just see where we end up, okay?
Very excited. Any questions?
Board have any other comments or questions or issues you want to raise with regards to the application, the way it stands now? I understand your reluctance to do, to a deep dive into the application if it's going to change. But, uh, but you know, we can at least start talking about, um, some of the issues that were obvious and, you know, clear from the very get-go. All right. Okay, sounds like we have a path forward. Everyone agree? Yes. Okay.
Chair, just want to make sure my team doesn't, uh, Justin from CHOP, anybody, Brian, Ralph, any other last questions for Chair or members of planning?
No, thank you for your feedback. No, thanks, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Wow, it's only seven thirty.
Listen, I consider just have a chat with you all if you want. I'm just kidding. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for your time. We'll see you in November.
Good night. We will see you sometime in November.
Absolutely. Good night, everyone. Take care. Ashley, thank you.
Thank you.
Get off of here now.
This is, this is what you get when you do your homework and you prep for the meeting. Thank you very much, Ashley. Uh, I know you did a lot of work prepping for this meeting. Okay, does any other member of, uh, the planning board have anything else they want to add to this? And thank you, Susan and John, also. Um, I just want to let you all know, um, planning board members know that the Board of Trustees agreed at a meeting that wasn't their meeting last night, but the one before that, to have a meeting with the land use chairs with regards to some changes to, um, the code with regards to flooding in a fifty-foot setback. Um, and I understand there's other, uh, issues with the code with regards to flooding that might come up. Um, that meeting was tentatively scheduled for this week, but, uh, has been postponed and it will have to be rescheduled. And Teresa has been invited, um, to that meeting as well. Um, so I'll keep you posted on what that's all about. That's as much as I know right now. Uh, we did give comments on, on some suggested changes to the code some time ago, more than a year ago, which were never made, I believe. So they're revisiting, um, flood code, um, at this point in time. Obviously, it's an, it's an urgency after IDA. Um, and I think that's all I had to say about that, because I don't really know much about it. You know, our materials on the boards, um, agenda from two weeks ago, um, when they discussed it, if you want to look and see, or I can send you a marked-up copy of what their changes, which I haven't looked at yet. I was waiting to finish today's night's meeting. But if you're interested, just shoot me an email and I'll send them to you. If you're interested in looking at the changes to the code, but they're on the, they're on the bill to us. Um, other than that, I don't think we have any other business for tonight. Um, I think some, oh, some of you may have, oh, yeah, you weren't here earlier. Um, the, uh, six twenty East Boston Post Road, is that the right address, Frank? Um, you know, we've been watching them after we passed a, uh, resolution that they.
West, west.
West, west and west. All right, west. I know, I always confuse it. To me, it's north and south. West Boston Post Road, uh, you know, crossing the harbor. They did not follow their landscape plan. We told them they had to follow their landscape plan. Uh, Frank's on top of it. He's been on top of it for the past several months. Um, so, uh, we have some deadlines for them, uh, that they agreed to, and, uh, Frank is working with them on it. We did get an email from a resident about it, but that was, uh, something that we had already been working on. And so we were, we were on it and we have, you know, just so you know, watch for October twenty-fifth or so, maybe you'll see some boulders move. If not, um, they'll be moved by, uh, which or something, so we'll, we'll work on it. Frank's working on it. Okay, is there anything else anybody wants to talk about? No? If so, I can have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, good night, everybody. Be safe.